Well, good evening. We'd like to thank you all for being here this evening on the regular meeting of Tuesday, February 6, 2018, at the Stillwater Planning Commission. I'll call the meeting to order. Just as a show of hands, I just wanted to get a sense of how many are interested in speaking this evening, just to get a just general, I mean, I'm not putting out, okay, that seems reasonable, okay. We'll begin with the land use items for discussion of possible action. City of Stillwater, 12th Avenue Land Use Plan, MAP Amendment, MA-18-02, requesting review and approval of MAP amendments to apply the neighborhood conservation overlay district to specific properties and area generally bound by 12th Avenue, Willis Street, 8th Avenue, and Washington Street, and apply a neighborhood mixed-use overlay district to specific properties and area generally bounded by 12th Avenue, Blakely Street, 11th Avenue between Blakely and Jefferson, Washington, and 6th Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening. Lance Gross with Development Services. This is a MAP amendment for the 12th Avenue plan that came about by rezoning request on 12th Avenue. The request was postponed by City Council at their January 23, 2017 meeting. The council also requested staff to conduct a public process to consider a possible change to the comprehensive plan for the vicinity. The overlay text is currently in place. What this MAP amendment does is assign a physical boundary to the text ordinance. This is the original study area. The public process began with a study area from Washington to one-half block west of Pine, and from 11th to south of 12th Avenue. The area included one parcel east of Washington, the Stillwater Hospital property, and the commercial properties fronting onto 12th. This is the original proposed overlay. After meeting, or after many meetings with homeowners and residents, both in the neighborhood and the community, two overlays were proposed to the Planning Commission and City Council. The orange is the proposed neighborhood conservation overlay, and the blue is the proposed mixed-use overlay. The City Council at the May 15, 2017 meeting remanded the proposed, the proposal back to the Planning Commission for input from the neighborhood regarding uses in the mixed-use overlay and the geographical boundaries of the overlay district. The Neighborhood Committee met over the summer to finalize the text and boundary for the overlays. This map indicates the boundaries that the committee recommended. The purple line indicates the original study boundary, located down here. The orange area is the committee's proposed neighborhood conservation district. The overlay extends from one-half block west of Washington to Willis, and from 12th Avenue to 9th Avenue on the west, and to 8th Avenue on the east portion. The green area is the committee's proposal, or proposed neighborhood mixed-use overlay. This overlay is one-half block east and one-half block west of Washington, from 12th Avenue to 6th Avenue. This is the proposed overlay with changes. The neighborhood conservation overlay district is adopted by ordinance number 3393. The neighborhood mixed-use overlay district is adopted by ordinance 3394. Changes were made to the proposed neighborhood map by this body in the City Council to produce, to produce this map. What is before you tonight is to consider the application of the overlay districts to specific properties. Notification letters were sent to property owners within each overlay district and within 300 feet of the boundaries of the overlays. Property owners have voiced their concerns for the overlays. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you guys might have before we get to the findings. The findings. The overlay district supports the recommended future land use of the C-3 plan for the area. The overlay districts are more restrictive than the over, or underlying zoning districts in order to preserve the residential neighborhood and enhance the opportunities at a neighborhood scale. The overlay districts apply requirements that some existing uses are not currently meeting. The overlay ordinance, ordinances are approved and adopted. The overlay district requirements are not assigned to specific properties until final action by City Council and the subject item. The original study area consisted of a much smaller area with fewer affected properties. The neighborhood group greatly expanded the areas proposed for both the neighborhood conservation overlay district and the neighborhood mixed-use overlay district. Application of the overlay districts to certain properties will create legal non-conforming Any questions?
Question here. You had, I lost my mind, okay. You had said that, you know, the overlays are more restrictive to preserve the neighborhood, and clearly, a large emphasis on that is to ensure that any non-residential uses that come in or go in the area are kept from conflicting with the residences. Is there anything in the overlay, especially the neighborhood conservation overlay, that would affect existing residences in terms of non, non-conforming?
Excuse me. No. The, the existing uses that are there can, can remain. The, any future building expansion would fall under the, the overlay ordinance.
Okay, so when you say that some of the existing uses are non-compliant, you mean commercial uses or things that are non-residential?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
No other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, yes.
At this point, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of them, so let's just to be clear, the favorage would be, we'll just have them speak in favor of the, those overlays as stated, right? That, so, does that make sense? So you're in favor, you're in favor of this. When we say we're not in favor, those are people that are not in favor of that, all right, just to make that a little easier. And when you come up, please speak, step forward, give your name and address for the record, and we'll get there, all right? So I didn't have a sign-up sheet, so just, in an orderly fashion, come
My name is Michael Oliver. I live in 1123 South Gray. I am in the neighborhood conservation area and have been part of the group that expanded the area to a larger area for both conservation and mixed-use overlays. I'm in favor of the overlays. That's what the City Council has directed, that they want to see, and they sent it back to the Planning Commission to work with the neighborhood to have the neighborhood's input, which we did. We are aware that the property where Sprouts is located are concerned about the mixed-use overlay affecting their business hours, which is not our intent. So I would be fine removing that specific property where Sprouts is located from the mixed-use overlay so they can continue to do business as they always have done. In addition to that, with the events of last night's City Council meeting, I think it would be fair to add the rest of 1220 West 12th Street to the mixed-use overlay since that seems to be what the use will be as it, the PUD was approved. Otherwise, I believe that the, the plan should be approved. Any questions? No? Thank you.
John Pollack at 1106 South Adams. I really just want to add my voice to Michael's that this, we've gone through this process at both the Planning Commission and the City Council, and it's been tacitly approved. What we're doing tonight and will do at the next council meeting is closing a legal procedure for notification, and so I just encourage you to stay the course. Any questions? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Shirley Weeks. I live at 71 University Circle. I would just like to say that Michael is a spokesperson for a great number of the people that have come to regular meetings from since, it seems like forever. So I just wanted you to know that he represents a group, not just himself. Thank you.
I'm Deborah Meinke. I live at 1023 South King Street. I also wanted to just add my support to the conservation overlays as they've been drawn. I live near the, the further western edge of the overlay, and so I'm very pleased that that entire portion of residential housing has been included in the overlay. So I urge you all to support the existing boundaries that have been drawn.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? There being none, I'll now have anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item. Please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Calvin Oyster. I have a property on 804 South Blakely. I assume it's just been added into this district since this is the first correspondence I've gotten on any of this, so apparently it was added into the overlay. My statements would be in regard to, I'm not really understanding why it's the responsibility of the city to determine that the facades or the frontage part of these properties needs to have a porch, and it needs to be five feet square, and it needs to not be vinyl siding, and it needs, I'm curious as to why these, not in a subdivision that was created with homeowners' rules and dues and all of those things, where some of these requirements come from, and why it's the responsibility of the city to, you know, say that that's the way it has to be. I have concerns that if I were to change the front of my property and want to expand the, the front rooms of it, if you will, as long as the setbacks are proper and the permits are acquired and those things to do the work, I don't understand why it's, anybody's concerned what type of siding I use on, as a part of the city. I don't really grasp the, I think it's a launching pad, truthfully, to turn it into a neighborhood association full of requirements and restrictions that harmed me on several other properties in another area of the city and caused me great loss. And I don't understand that. I don't understand, I think it's intrusive and overreaching, and I don't think it's at all proper. Just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, sir. Now, it's my understanding that the ordinances themselves are not anything that we, we have any province over this evening at all. That has already been decided by statute. We're just defining the area this evening that they fall under. So we really, point's well taken, but we can't, like, anything about the porches and the thing, none of that is anything that we have any province over this evening, so I just wanted to let everybody know that. We're just defining an area, if there is an area, what that area would be, which would fall under said ordinance. So please, and anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. I just wanted to make that.
Hi, my name's Darren Nutter. My mother-in-law, Ann McCormick here, I'm speaking on behalf of her. She owns the property on West 6th Avenue. That's currently the Sprouts Grocery Store. She owns the building, okay? So, thank you for letting, letting us speak. I would ask that, that property that is at the very north end, that's currently the, the grocery store, be excluded from the overlay. There's been a grocery store there for well over 50 years. It's been an integral part of the community, as it serves both residences, it serves students and staff and faculty from the university. I'd also point out that it, as you know, I'm sure, that it is on 6th Street, Highway 51, Main, Main Avenue. I would, I would argue that it puts the business at a disadvantage to restrict the hours compared to all the other businesses on 6th Street. I would also argue that it limits access in terms of time and availability to, to buy groceries, for example. If, I remember when I went to school at Oklahoma State, that I didn't necessarily buy my groceries at 5:00 PM. It might have been closer to 10:00. It also is a burden, I would argue, on the employees. The full-time employees, the student employees that are working their way through school, that are trying to earn money, that's one less hour. For example, if it reduced their operating hours from 10:00 PM to 9:00, that's one less hour that they would be able to work. So that impacts the employees and their families in terms of revenue. Lastly, I would, I would argue that it puts the company at a competitive disadvantage, the store in particular, as it cannot be open, like all the other businesses on, on 6th Street. And so that's going to impact, that's going to reduce their revenues, and that's going to reduce the revenue that the state, or the, and the city, earn from, from that business. So I'd ask that you take that into consideration. So, again, I am speaking against that particular overlay, in particular, 909 West 6th Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So if we, if we remove Sprouts, you would not have any objection? Is that a correct statement?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. Can I ask you a question? Was, were there any other conditions in that ordinance overlay that you objected to, other than the, the time constraints and the, the roadway cuts, which are already in existence?
Yeah.
Driveways, I mean.
No, it's, it's the restrictions overall that, that, and against, in addition to the hours. Because if we were to have a need to make a change, I'm not sure what impact change to that building for the grocery store to operate, I'm not sure what restrictions would, would, we would encounter there. And so, our request is that it be completely removed.
How big is that parcel, do you know?
Um, no, I don't know offhand. I could get that information for you.
Is there only one structure on it, the Sprouts building, or are there any other?
On the parcel that we own, yes. There is a small building on the southeast corner.
Yeah. It shows another building there. What, do you know what that's use is?
It's, it's, it's leased by Sprouts as well, and it's used for storage. I won't walk away this time, in case you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Stephen, S-T-E-P-H-E-N, Mcaleb, M-C-C-A-L-E-B, 4800 North Ligon Boulevard, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73105. I'm a Sprouts State Council. I do their liquor licensing across the state. And I'm here to echo the previous presenter's comments. It's, it would be, we, we object to the, the whole, we, we want, we want the whole parcel to be excluded. That's what we want. At the bare minimum, we would like to be in business current with what we are right now, which is to 10:00 PM. And this, what this impacts is potentially seven hours a week for the team, which could be up to $250 a week per team member. What, what I'd like to specifically talk about, can I go point at the board?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
When, when you, when you drive on West 6th Street or West 6th Avenue, right here is Sprouts, and I, I could be a little bit wrong on the exact locations, but directly to the north of it, just right across the street, you got McDonald's, you got a, to the east, you got Kentucky Fried Chicken, you got Subway directly to the north of it, a tattoo parlor, physical therapy place, you got Amazios down here. So I think that excluding the, the particular, it's 909 West 6th Avenue, I think excluding that from the, from the map is not consistent with the current use of what's going on right there anyway. And I'll be quick, but I just remember back in 1998, I came to Stillwater to participate in a political campaign function, and that was, we, we met at the IGA. That was the common point to me. Go meet at IGA. Now, also on that same day, Oklahoma State destroyed OU in a football game. So I remember that day very well. But it was a community point to meet, it was the place to go, and it's on a major thoroughfare. We asked that it be excluded from this plan. But at least, please let us stay open till 10 o'clock, as we currently do. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Chris Jobe, property at 1011 South Adams. I've owned the property since 94, and I, just from reviewing this, when I first saw the, the initial overlays, they were smaller and didn't, you know, at that point in time, didn't think it fit me, but with this expanded overlay, the property, I believe, will, just from what I'm, I'm seeing here, will have several non-conformances, which would present, you know, a, a financial burden. And so I'm asking that, that would be, that property would be excluded too. I, I guess it was unclear whether or not it applied to existing structures. Existing structures do not apply.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Excuse me.
Norma Jean Shamblin. I live at 711 Lake Shore Drive, and I'm here wearing, wearing two hats. I, I belong to the neighborhood. I have properties on 10th Street, but I am also here representing the Stillwater Apartment and Housing Association. At our last meeting, we spent a good deal of time talking about this overlay. We support the neighborhood in wanting to keep it a residential neighborhood, in not allowing commercial or, I guess, apart also. But we have real concerns about the restrictions on the residential property. In, within your overlay, you, you request that any improvements or expansions has to be compatible with the current neighborhood. And we feel that, 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 that we support that completely. But then, most of the new ordinance that you put on the neighborhood is in direct opposite to this. It, it requires things that you do not find in the neighborhood. Also, say, say from my personal point of view, is that this is an affordable housing neighborhood, both for the people that live in it and for those that have rental properties. And, and the requirements that you are putting on the houses that are remodeled or, or built there do not, do not have them blend into the neighborhood, and they also cost money. To me, the easiest one to see is, is that you have to have a sidewalk from the front door to a sidewalk. Well, there are no sidewalks in that neighborhood. Or, or, or down to the street. This neighborhood, like mine, and most of the neighborhoods that I have, I have been in, there, there are no blocks, and so people use their driveways as the sidewalk. And the sidewalk from their front door comes to the driveway. And they park their cars, and they go in on that sidewalk, their guests come up there. And, and I, I can pers, we, the Apartment Association feels that this is an unnecessary thing, that it, it detracts from the house because it makes it very different from any of the other houses there, and it increases the cost of the affordability. There was one other, where you, not having a driveway on the side street, which affects your, your corner properties. Most corner properties face their garage to the side street, and which, which I don't think in any way detracts from the house or, or, or the neighborhood. We, we really feel, feel that if you use the wording that you had, where, where you are any additions or improvements to blend in and be compatible with the neighborhood the way it is, that that would maintain, this is, this is a vibrant neighborhood. It is a neighborhood that has kept its value. And lots of the things that you are requesting here are contrary to what's already there, increase the cost, and I don't think add value, which is a bit to what the other general, and, and your question, or asked, does any of this on the neighborhood add new requirements? Yes, it does. Because if any of us want to improve it, it, I, yeah, I hadn't the, the siding, but, but none of mine have, have vinyl siding. And, and if I, and I've improved them all. So, so if I come back and I have to put vinyl siding, I don't really like vinyl siding. I really prefer wood or, wood or brick, personally. You know, I would, I would like to see you go back to an overlay that says it needs to be compatible. Could you explain to me what you were saying about it within the codes? What codes?
The ordinances that were, ordinance 3393 and 3394 are determined and not by the, it's not what we're dealing with this evening. All we're doing is assigning the area, if there is an area within which they fall. We, we are not discussing anything about those ordinances this evening. So to your point about many of these pieces you can deal with this evening.
Unless we opt not to do anything.
Of course. If we do nothing, then yes, of course, that, we're, we're trying to define.
But we can't, we can't change the ordinance.
Exactly. That's exactly.
But, again, we're just trying.
Okay.
We can choose to draw the boundaries of this differently to.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
We can choose injuries on this map differently to define those neighborhoods differently, but we can't change the ordinance, which defines the idea. but we can't change the ordinance, which defines the idea of the.
Is this ordinance only for this neighborhood?
It could apply to other neighborhoods if the city chose to do that. We're not doing that.
Where did this ordinance come from?
The ordinances that were passed by previous city council meetings. So that's already been in effect. That's a generic ordinance that defines how the overlay is applied. Right now, those ordinances don't apply anywhere. What's before the commission tonight is to establish the boundaries for this neighborhood. And then, once the boundaries are decided, there's the boundaries, then the ordinances that have already been passed will apply to this neighborhood.
Okay. So you're saying there are ordinances that have been passed that will be automatically applied to every single neighborhood?
No.
That, that, that has an overlay?
Any neighborhood going forward that comes forward to apply a neighborhood conservation overlay to it will have to abide by the ordinances that were passed. But only the things going forward, not backward. So the only question before the commission tonight is what are the boundaries going to be for this neighborhood conservation overlay? Not what kind of siding, not walk, none of that stuff. Just what are the boundaries for this neighborhood overlay?
Well, I think the Apartment Association has strong.
But the council has placed.
Objections on those ordinances.
This is not.
Because I don't see them fitting in my neighborhood. I don't see them fitting in this neighborhood.
Ms. Shamblin.
Or, 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 or any, or any of the others. So, so at that point, we need to go talk to the city.
City council.
Thank you for listening to me.
No, thank you.
Fine. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Chris Van. I have the property at 706, 708 Washington, and I'm strictly in opposition to this. In reference to, kind of clarification, some of us may not have picked up on that. But those ordinances only apply to the things going forward, correct? But if you apply this area to whatever specific zones, they were speaking about Washington Street, one of my properties is eliminated for some reason, fire, tornado, whatever, then those ordinances would then apply if, if you include this area in it. Is that correct? Just for clarification?
Yes.
Okay. So we know that. I'm perplexed as to how and why you're trying to go with a mixed-use neighborhood from 12th to 6th on a two-lane street, not a four-lane street like 12th Street, where you have all the new expansion with a hospital, with proposed pharmacies and so forth. Can anybody enlighten me to that as to why they would try?
It's been a long conversation.
We're here.
There was a lot of opposition to more commercial development along 12th because of the original reasons for the creation of 12th as a way to move traffic away from 6th.
So to move traffic down a two-lane street, 12th Street was a four-lane street, correct? Yes?
I believe because there's existing commercial development on Washington, the idea was that was a place where a mixed-use neighborhood made sense.
Okay. But within that neighborhood itself, say if someone wants to buy my parcels and create a commercial building on that, it's restricted to a 2,000 square foot solely. Is that correct? That's correct.
If, if it, if it is part of it.
If you encompass that within the area.
That's correct.
So what benefits, in any way, shape, or form, to me, or anyone else owns property in that area, is this proposition? How's it going to affect us? Are they an additional bureaucratic mess that's going to pile on top of zones that are in place already?
It basically, it, when you consider the restrictive nature of the, what's actually permitted in terms of, it tends to protect the residential uses.
Okay. On that particular strip, I manage property, commercial property, that butts up to 6th Street. I have managed residential property, that's between 8th and 9th, on Washington. None of that property is owner-occupied. That is all, everyone that I'm in contact with is used for tenants, commercial tenants, tenants for residents going to college, whatever so forth. That's not a residential neighborhood. There may be others where this applies, but specifically not on Washington Street.
The, in, in general, the, the impetus for having an overlay allows the city to say, if this area starts to develop into more and more commercial uses because of the connectivity between 6th and 12th, here's the standards we want you to know about going so that, right off the bat, the residences in the surrounding area are protected from unrestricted, uncontrolled commercialization. I mean, if you want to look at it that way, that's the general principle of overlays. It's, it's putting something in place in advance to control what hap, so.
Correct, yep. But that's already in place, is it not? We just can't go, if I elect to go over and doze my properties tomorrow, I can't put a Marriott there. It's not going to happen. I spoke to a gentleman earlier.
That's what this hearing is for.
Let me interject this as well. Had a gentleman call me earlier that owns the property due south of, what is that, Valero, and it's due west of the Sprouts store. He connects to 6th Street. Initially, he was in support of this. He thought that that would be beneficial to him in the long run to possibly, to be able to commercially zone his property. And when restriction of 2,000 square feet, he changed automatically. He had a previous engagement, he couldn't be there this evening, or he would have been here himself speaking against that. So there is some good that could happen, but not specifically with this proposition. There's too many restrictions. It's already in place. We don't, bureaucracy don't control us in this area. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Robert Moore, Southwestern. I went through a lot of this last night at the city commission meeting, but I own properties, four continuous properties, properties on South Adams, 1113 through 1121, all but up to 12th Street. These, these properties were purchased for basically commercial use. They're not, that are of any use, they're going to last very long. Some of them need to come down. They're bought from estates and individuals that needed out of them because they couldn't maintain them. What I'm talking about right now, we've got it split in half, where half of it's in the overlay and half of it's not. And I've been contacted, since I've been trying to look at this, by four doctors, pharmacist, one restaurant owner, all locals, not chains. And whenever they see that there's a 2,000 square foot minimum, when we just had a PUD that was done, allowed drive-throughs and allowed 3,000 or more square feet in the properties, and then, they're all saying, well, we've got to have 3,500 square feet or more. I'm a dentist myself, got 4,000 feet, and I'm working by myself. You can't work in 2,000 feet. There might be one chiropractor in the whole area that works at 2,000 square feet or less. So what we've got is a, a set restriction, which means none of these practices and be here for 30 years can build anything because they can't build big enough. And then if you restrict the flow of the drive-through, we just allowed two drive-throughs on a pharmacy on the PUD last night, and then you're going to restrict them everywhere else, all of a sudden, that's going to take another pharmacy out that says, if you're sick, we want you, because they got a pharmacy that wants to go there also, because we've got a growing hospital area that, right now, there's 80 to 100 employees in the one building on the plaza, Stillwater Medical Center Plaza. They run over 100 people through there a day of patients. What happens when we have five buildings in four or five years and we have 3,000 patients? Pharmacies are going to have a shot at getting to those people that have prescriptions. Everybody goes to the doctor, gets a prescription. They want shots at those. They're, they're wanting to, wanting that developed and wanting to buy parcels and build their own projects, just like some of the doctors are. They're looking for places where they can build their own buildings, but build buildings for 30. And what we've done is we've let the neighborhood come in and say, here's what we want to do, and we're going to try to restrict that and stop that area. As that area develops and becomes a major thoroughfare, we're, we're stopping that. And I want to be the first opt-out of this. If I can jump on board and opt-out of this, I want to. We'll apply for commercial properties. Mine's been split, split in half. I'm right here. Four properties, it's been split in half with about 40%. There's more here than here. This PUD was approved all the way here, so we've got a buffer between them in the, in the area. And so, thank you.
Yeah, we talk here.
Okay. Well, anyway, that, that's what we're, what I'm seeing here. And when people want to come in there, and when you restrict the hours, I'm a dentist, I've been at my office at 2:00 in the morning when people have car wrecks and need work. And when you restrict, you know, I can't hardly say if a doctor or dentist goes in there and says, hey, I can't go see you on an emergency basis because of those hours, even for emergencies. So you've got a lot of issues that aren't being considered here. And I think that there's a lot of things that need to be thought out before we go through with this, that seem to be coming through. We've, we've gone through so many stages of this. We started at one area, then we went to another, then we went to the whole thing, and then we became up with, now, first time I've seen this, where they're trying to take this area just to the east of the PUD and try to control it. And most of this is done by the neighborhood, and I understand exactly where they come from. I don't blame any of them. But I don't think we're going to see people go into this development and try to put things in other than things, values, because the properties there are going to be impossible to maintain in a few years. And when you put these restrictions, every single property that's not in very good shape, you're condemning it not to be changed because no one can put $80 to $100 square foot in a piece of property, and then to build something new to make it fit the requirements, and then put $130 a square foot to build, you've got $250 a square foot in a 1,000 square foot little rental place. These properties are 284 foot deep. Being 75 foot wide, you can't, you're going to ask somebody to build a property that's just residential, have a yard, that you're going to ask some renter to mow it and maintain it and waste that use. And in several years, when we have all this growth in that hospital, because I don't think any of us think they're through. You see the roads they put in, they've got more buildings to go. And you're going to have 25, 30 doctors possibly in there and other things, and you may have 1,000 in five years. And we're not going to be prepared to support those structures. I talked to someone at the hospital yesterday in one of the clinics that has over 30 employees, just in that one physician's office, and they said, right now, we have to drive, if we want to go somewhere other than a food truck, we have to drive on Perkins Road, fight with everybody else to get lunch, and eat it in our cars on the, hour. We don't have time, and we need something in this area. And I told her why I was asking how many employees they had, because, you know, she said, when I told her what was going on, she said, well, do all you can because we need some help down here. And so we've got a lot of things that are developing faster. We put the infrastructure in, the, gave them permission with 160 acres, but yet we're not going to give the commercial support to support what's coming. And I think we're going to be in trouble if we don't do something. And my goal is to, fairly soon, go through and try to apply for commercial. But if you, if we come in and we, we have all these restrictions where we can't put drive-throughs, it takes the people that we want, 2,000 square foot, well, like, one second, I said tattoo parlors, things like that, things that will occupy those spaces. Doctors now are going in in groups, and they're, and they're all fairly large, and they're 3,500 to 5, 6,000 feet. The offices in the hospital are, are 3,500 to 6,000, yet we're going across the street and saying you can't have more than 2,000 feet. Well, some of the doctors that are there want to have their own business. They don't want to be a part of that hospital, but they want to be close. So they want to go over there and build their own practice for 30, 35 years and put up to a million dollars in a really nice project. They're not going to be allowed to do that. So I think we need to back off and look at what we, what we need to try to do here to support that hospital structure that's coming. I think we all know it's coming. We all know they're not through. They wouldn't have built the roads behind and the four lanes through and the ingress, egress. There's plans there. There's three buildings, and I'm only talking about one building. There's a lot of people running through there, and we don't realize how many. I know by count, there's 80 to 100 employees in one building. And I can break that down if you need me to, to verify, because I've, I've verified that with people. But that's a lot of, a lot of people that need support, and we're not giving them the support, and we're putting ourselves, or tying our hands so we can't support. We have a full block, a barrier between that resident that was approved last night, and so everything to the east of that, the property I have and Mr. Ebert's property are the only two that are above floodplain. Everything else to the east is in floodplain. Makes it very difficult to develop those areas as people want to. So we have land there that we can develop, and I just, I just think we're, we're pushing this through to a point where we're not thinking out the future. We're thinking right now, but we're not thinking what's coming. And that's my concern. And so if it's possible to opt-out, I want to be the first one. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Eddie Watkins. I live at 1123 Westwood Drive here in Stillwater. And Mr. Ebert and I, and another gentleman, Don Short, are partners in the 1220 property that was approved, and we want to opt-out. I don't know what effect it'll have on it since the PUD was approved, but we also have 1124 South Adams and the vacant lot to the south of that, and we would like to opt-out that also. Future holds, and there's, I think everybody here, you know, is unsure of what this is going to cause. And we just feel like there's too much government overreach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Walter Kelly. I reside at 1911 West Third Avenue, and we have two pieces of property that are in the proposed overlay. One is at 1320 West 9th. It sits on five city lots. The other is at 824 South Stanley. We would, those pieces of property, and in addition, I'd just like to state, because I don't see any benefit from these ordinances, I don't think we should pass the proposed overlay to the entire boundaries that are set forth.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to?
Yeah, my name is Christopher Wilson. I have the property at 915 South Orchard. I'm right on the edge of the overlay there. Pretty, that's in that little indention there on the south side of 9th is a, where my property butts to. I, I'm kind of like some of the rest of them. I think it's a little bit of overreach on, on part of the city. I've got a little bit of concern about some of the things that are going to be required. Minimum of two driveways. I mean, what, are those things going to be mandatory to be installed? Or does it say that it's not required to be?
The commission can't give you any legal advice as to what would be required or not required. It's also not in position tonight to discuss the ordinances that were already passed. The council's already passed those, put those into.
I understand, I understand that, but I'm saying that there's.
They can't answer those questions.
There's, I mean, it's stated, it doesn't say anywhere that you're grandfathered in, correct?
That, that's legal advice, and I can't give it to you. That's not.
I mean, it's just not stated in here anywhere that, that current properties are grandfathered in unless here that new construction will be required to, all new construction in the overlay district shall comply with the following bulk standards.
The codes that were passed by the city council will not apply retroactively to property that's already there, unless you try to improve it or.
If you try to improve it, then are you automatically?
If you're within the overlay, yes.
Be required to conform to all the requirements?
Yes.
Okay, so in here, it talks about all prop, all structures having, have an eight, no pitch on the roof. Going to have to change your roof?
If you make changes to the structure going forward, the new codes will apply.
Seriously?
This is not the place for this discussion, though. The only discussion tonight is do you want your property in the boundary or not, or what do you want the boundaries to be?
Yeah, I definitely want to opt-out at 915. Okay. This is ridiculous.
Are you on the south side of 9th or on the north side of 9th?
South side.
Just on the south side there, right on.
So I'm on the east side of 9th.
Got it. Right on the corner of Orchard 9th.
Well, I'm about three houses south. And I have the property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Mike Ebert, 2206 Stone Point Court, Stillwater, at 12th and Gray. And I just want to go on record as. want to go on record as choosing not to be a part of the overlay. And I understand that we've got a lot of things that you can't discuss here because it's been approved. But I hope that you all know what you're, that's within those ordinances. And I don't know if you guys have an opportunity again to look at them or change them or do whatever, but they need looked at closely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Kevin Kruger. I own the property at 910 South Adams. So my first question was about the grandfathering in. So does the grandfathering survive a sale or transfer of the deed?
What's there now, before the code was in effect, before the overlay goes in?
Unless it's been unoccupied for a year, is that right?
Yes.
And is there some, I saw, I understand there's some redrawing of the lines?
Well, so far, we haven't discussed any. It's possible that something can change.
Okay. I just, I find these maps kind of interesting. You know, what, I had, I guess, but you know, the jagged corner on the southeast corner, the five or six blocks north of Ninth, and a little cutout at Walnut and Ninth. It's just kind of, it's interesting to me. And I'm not pointing out, you know, hopefully, I'm not getting any tomatoes from behind me. But I was, the Westwood seemed like we were too late to discuss this. And I get the feeling from this map that maybe I'm too late because I'm in the orange. You know, somebody in the white, just outside the white, probably has already had discussions. And that's why they're in the white instead of the orange. So they want to have extra overlay, I guess, in the green. So to me, that just seems like folks with some ends or some power or something can get these lines drawn. And I've had the previous communication group and survey, but I understood that that was all around 12th Street. I'm up at Ninth. Didn't know this was really going to affect me at all. The house was built before 1950 and before most suburbans were even thought of. And now we've got what's effectively an HOA coming in the middle of town. I'd encourage everyone in this room to tour this area because I think you've got different neighborhoods here. A lot of the stuff that's, that may apply on the west side doesn't seem to really fit my property on the east side. And I would guess if I owned a property on the west, it didn't really apply to my property either. And I'm probably helping a future code enforcer, but I've got six sections that my, my house fails and why. I don't have, so building front facade, I don't have room for a sidewalk. I just mentioned a while ago, the, the pitch of the roof. So if I re-roof a house, I got to change the pitch of the roof.
If you take the whole thing off, if you're just going to put new shingles on it, I don't believe that's going to require you to change the pitch of the roof.
What if you take the shingles off?
If you take the shingles off and just construction, change the structure.
Okay.
And the only thing that needs to be changed under the overlay is anything that you do the work on. So if you take off the facade out of front of your building, then what you put back up has to comply with the code and the overlay. If you don't do anything to the front, you don't have to change anything to comply.
Okay. So gravel driveways are fine, then. Is that permeable? What is that?
There's separate standards all through the city on driveways and, and what's permissive.
Approved permeable surface. Is that gravel?
Probably not.
But that's probably the biggest one that I saw just driving through here, is you kind of have on the western kind of driveways and houses. On the east side, there's lots of properties that have different types of construction. Gravel on, on the driveways, that kind of thing. One tree shall be planted and maintained in the front yard each 50 feet of struc, that's probably one of the government requirements I've ever read. It's got a certain Stepford Wives feel to it. You know, that might work in, you know, you read these HOA covenants on the east coast where they get in trouble for flying an American flag on their house. Can't have playground equipment in their back
That's the ordinance that was already passed. Anything you have on those concerns need to be directed to council because they're the ones that passed that ordinance. The only thing before the commission tonight is what goes in the boundaries, what areas.
Okay.
Not, not what kind of trees you put inside the boundaries, what properties are going to be in the boundaries.
Okay. So to fit inside this code, if you were to rebuild it, I think the only thing that would fit in that is a driveway, a sidewalk to a tree. And I'm pretty sure with a side, side yard setback of no less than eight, eight feet, rear yard setback of 20 feet, doesn't have to be 19 or 21 feet, it'd have to be exactly 20 by my reading. I'm guessing I could have a treehouse with a porch on it with a window. So my, well, I maybe, maybe I guess I am too late on this. But my hope was that I was not too late tonight standing for my property rights. I felt like I was powerless when Burns Hargis and his crew came in here on the Westwood, and I feel like I'm powerless tonight, sitting here and watched a 6-0 vote on everything that night. And I feel like that's happening again. But I ask, if you guys can stand up for property rights, I ask you guys to, or the other, the city council, I ask them to reconsider these ordinances. And I'd ask that my tiny little lot be painted white instead of orange. Thank you.
Just as a side note, staff just advised me they'll be happy to stay after the meeting and protect your property. So all the questions that you have can be answered tonight if you want to stay. I just got a note. Well, I could talk to you after the meeting.
My name is John Mill Irons. I reside at 211 South Oakdale Drive. I have a property at 1107 South McDonald. And Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I'm Kathy Cable. And my husband Daryl and I live at 2011 West 11th Avenue. And we are opposed to the overlay being applied to our neighborhood because we're concerned about the parking restrictions that it shows in here, especially the one where it says parking. The reason we're concerned about that is we would love to have parking be on one side of the street so that emergency vehicles could come by. But then there's another restriction that you can only have 40% of your front yard being paved as a driveway or whatever. And so it's like, we feel you need to work with people to help them park rather than saying you can't park in the street as much, but you can't pave your, you know, add more driveway space. So we are opposed to the overlay being applied.
Ma'am, what cross street, north-south street or is 2,000, I don't know the 2,000 block?
Oh, McFarland. We're in between McFarland and Willis on 11 We are in the orange.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? There being none, I will close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
Chair Rickelman, can we take a short recess? 10 minutes or so?
Yep.
Is that okay with everybody?
Before we do the staff
Yes, sir.
It's fine with me. So we'll recess. It is 6:30, 45. Thank you.
The air, the air hits
Brad, how did you say we would start?
Nice down.
I'm sure the address is
Do you want me to input this in my minutes?
I'll just
When I'm typing out my minutes, I'll just say advisors or staff advisors. Okay.
You check if someone, you check if someone
I'll see.
Someone may want to watch this. She tried to watch when she is home, which is, when she's home, she does. My dad loves Ascended the Lord. It can't be anything official, nothing regarding the top. You want to talk about the tie or something?
Yes.
Okay. I'll be back in just a few moments. Let's get a water.
I'll let you Two driveways or sidewalks, none of that exists.
That is no problem.
I sent her a text, but, oh, now it's getting really cold in here. All the people stirring up the air.
Yeah.
Yeah. I brought my big heavy coat because it's the only one that's cat hair resistant, and I didn't have time to deal in.
I tried as best I could. This guy right here, I tried as best, it was not as good as I could.
Well, I've tried to get ahold of Jasmine, but I can't. I mean, the only thing you can do is turn off your red button on your, on your mic and then just make sure. But because I don't have any
There's going to be somebody right here says
Well, I tried to call Jasmine earlier because Brad's wife had said I didn't want to talk to her, but I couldn't get her. So I don't even know who's here tonight. Sorry. Making plans to be somewhere else at 6:00.
Oh, no way.
Well, yeah. Ugly Club meets Tuesdays. So city council approved that pharmacy case that we saw?
That's what I heard tonight.
That's what they were saying?
3-2.
3-2. I Kind of understands what happened.
I don't, they do their own thing, we do our own thing. Not to worry about what they do. They'll tell the ultimate decider.
And we're only making the point. Do we have any, are all of our action recommendations to city council? Or do we ever have any?
All our recommendations. We might have one somewhere, but I can't remember what it is.
Different places have structure differently.
That is correct.
Usually the higher volume places give more work, so that they can go faster. I don't think this was And the alternatives listed in the stamp report, are those ordinary options?
No.
We can maybe, of course. Yeah.
Well, one of them is
We could recommend we succeed, but it ain't going to get us anywhere.
Yeah, I'm not recommending that.
Yeah, I got you.
That's, that's My majority vote of this body.
And no matter what, some
It's correct.
Yeah, that's the
I wouldn't care if it fell on my shoulder.
Buck doesn't stop here.
Asking for staff's alternatives on the top of his hand, please.
Yes. And just for clarification, to try to answer some of the questions that some of the citizens had, had come up with. When somebody comes to, just that structure would have to be in compliance after the ordinance is, is in place. value in being in the orange overlay if they're asking to come out of it. Obviously, there, as Dusty said, too many negative, unintended negative consequences of the orange overlay, which is, now again, we're not discussing the... We're being tasked with assigning an overlay to help create something positive, but the actual outcome doesn't sound like it's going to be too positive. At least, I'm not hearing the audience members say that they want to be in it. Now, if it was positive and going to help the neighborhood, I would think the residents would be for it. And that's a planning issue that, again, perhaps that's something that, I don't know what we can do, because that's, the ordinances are not in front of us. But hearing that the consensus definitely seems to be that these two are purported to be created, so just from that most general ish of issues, I have a, I have a hard time supporting either overlay at this point, in particular, and certainly the green, the, the mixed use. Hearing the Sprouts people enumerate why they want to be out of the overlay doesn't solve the problem, because the problems that exist for that business owner will obviously exist for all business owners on all the properties. And I certainly don't think it's fair that if you were here tonight and spoke up, you got the escape. If you weren't here, or if you bought in the future, you're stuck. And I know we don't want that to be the process by which... That's my position in terms of what can we do about it. I'm certainly open to what this commission decides. I do think that the orange community conservation overlay is a good thing, despite some of the things that will lead to a good quality neighborhood. And personally, I hate standing out in the rain or snow when I'm trying to get my keys out of my pocket in that five-foot square entryway is a real blessing to me at that point. And if I'm wearing high heels and I have to get from my driveway to the front door, having a service level is a blessing. But again, if these standards aren't enumerated in a way that works for our community, then perhaps we need to look at them. That's, that's my position. Thank you.
Well, certainly, it seems as though there's no... It sounds in a certain sense, as it has constituted, the, the ordinance is constituted now, could there be any area to find any boundaries within which those would be, that we could get to some consensus on? So I think if we do table this to a certain date, yes, we want to... We're, we're in a situation where it could turn out that the areas that we feel actually could, ought to fit in those ordinance, there may be zero, it may be null. There may be null area that fits under those ordinances as stated, you see, so that, so we can bring back and we can have them look at different things.
Discussion here for a moment, because at the very beginning, we had several speakers in favor of this, and then we went against, we had several people against it. My experience has been, many times, the last few speakers that we hear, we go to that direction, the people speak against it first and the people for it next, so we can reverse the order at our next meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, no, you may not. I'm sorry. Because we had the same, this, we came up last time and it came up about allowing certain... The hearing is closed, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a bit familiar for, for these people?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. So, I mean, I don't know if that's, if we, if we can change the order in which you take negatives and positives, we can certainly just, you know, figure that out for the next meeting and I can let you know.
That we need additional information and discussion prior to making a recommendation, and that we table this item to March, to our convention meeting, on March 6th. And at the public hearing at that meeting, we have the...
Can I make a counter motion? Or do we have to vote on this first?
We have to wait till second before, it may die by the lack of a second.
Hearing no second?
I'm wondering if it's worthwhile to put the question of approving either overlay to a simple vote now. If both fail, do we need to come back in May, March?
It's been seconded. I'm not withdrawing my motion. I don't, I need more information. If, if you're going to have a motion to do that, I'm going to vote no every time, and I'm going to strongly say that we need more information.
Certainly, the motion on, on, on the floor is...
I don't have any problem with that. I feel like I'm capable of paying attention to pros and cons, no matter the order, but I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you.
And I see that another month may not change anything. I guess that's kind of what I heard. But I also feel like because of, of both sides and, and how long this has been going on and, and all the work that's been done on it, it does deserve... You want to reverse it, Mike? I'm fine with that. Reason I seconded. So I think it's worth another, another look.
Okay. There's no more discussion. We'll have a vote on whether the motion is to switch the order of public hearing for those to speak in opposition first. In addition to that, sorry about that. We will now vote. The motion passes 5 to 0. So it'll be tabled till March 6th. Meeting of January 16th, 2018.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Go ahead. Moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of January 16th. All vote. Motion passes 5 to... We have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Two have not voted. One has not voted.
Thank you all very much.
All excited.
Next meeting's February 20th.
20th, okay.
Sign.
And then this one is...